Okay. Check, check. There you go. This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum has been established and the meeting was, has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Welcome, everybody, to the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees meeting. It's good to see people in the crowd again. This is, this is fun, kind of getting back to normal. We're reconvening from executive session and I do believe Reverend Hager has the prayer and the pledge.
Please stand. Invite you to pray along with me in accordance with your tradition as I pray in accordance with mine. Heavenly Father, we come to you today and we acknowledge you as our Creator, our sovereign Lord, and we acknowledge that your plans and purposes are perfect and good. In fact, Father, they are better than ours even when we don't understand your plans. So we rest in that truth that nothing has happened to us as individuals, to our city, to our state, to our country that has surprised you or is outside of your control, which is our ultimate anchor in these turbulent times. For the Tyler ISD families, I pray that your fears about jobs and money, or for some maybe even food, that God would allay those fears, that he would provide for you, and that he would kindle in our community a renewed spirit of generosity to continue to help our neighbors as you've been doing. For our students during summer break, I pray for safety and protection and that, Father, you would bring them back to us, ready to learn, whenever the state allows. Father, for our graduating seniors, I recognize this has been an unsettling time for them and that their plans might have been disrupted or threatened, and I pray, God, that you will give them eyes to see the new opportunities that unfold even if their original plans have changed. Father, your word tells us that if we need wisdom, that all we should do is ask, and so, Father, I ask for wisdom for our national, our state, and our local leaders, and I ask for wisdom for this board and for this superintendent. Father, we desperately need you and need your wisdom. Thank you for the many blessings you've given to us, for the opportunity to serve our community and serve the children and the families of Tyler ISD. Pray that your spirit will continue to empower and guide us to do so. I pray all this in the name of my Savior, Jesus, and the power of your spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay. Thank you, Reverend Hager. We do have some action coming out of executive session, and that has to do with the approval of hiring a Director of Special Education. Does anybody have a motion on that?
I move that we approve Genie Dykman as Director of Special Education.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Congratulations, Ms. Dykman. Dr. Crawford, is Ms. Dykman here tonight?
She is not.
Okay.
Wasn't sure about what we were going to have as far as availability, so we asked her to go ahead and stay back, but she will be here as soon as that time allows. She's wrapping up her duties as high school principal at Crandall. Her first start date, or her start date here will be July 1.
Good deal. Well, we look forward to having her onboard. Congratulations, if you're watching, Ms. Dykman. Okay. We do have public participation on our agenda next, however, I do not believe we have anybody signed up once again. Okay. Next is the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the board workshop for April 9?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Now, we're on to our continuous improvement portion of the meeting, and first, we start out with a safety, security, compliance update.
Mr. Washman, trustees, every year, we conduct audits of our campuses and our facilities and our school system for the districts, so the first report that you're going to get here tonight is actually that compliance update, and then the back, the next report you'll get is a hashtag, the Safe T ISD update, which is our local update pursuant to Senate Bill 11 on our threat assessment teams for the district. So we're going to bring up for his first presentation, our Director of Safety and Security, Agent Jeff Millsagel. Agent Millsagel?
President Washman, board, Dr. Crawford, thank you. This is my first time to present something to you folks, and it's going to be in two phases, and the first is the safety and security audits that are required every three years. So from 2017 to 2020, we're required by the state to submit these, which has been done. This is in a different order, so bear with me. So there is, you see the codes, and it's required to be presented to the district's Board of Trustees, and this is what we've done since the beginning of the year. There are 11 schools and facilities that have been completed. On the agenda for June 2020 are the three there. Those have also been completed as of last Friday, and then one in August, one in November and December. Those will also be done here shortly so that we're all up to date and ahead of the schedule. Let me go back here. Do you have any questions on the compliance? When I arrived here, the first thing I was presented with was a grant. Senate Bill 500 authorized $100 million for safety and security for all our independent school districts in Texas. TISD's portion of that was approximately $293,000. We submitted that in January. It was approved, and the funds were made available in April. There's also a caveat there that should we need additional funds, school districts that did not apply, it goes back into the pool of money so we can ask for more funds. It's very limited and specific on what we can do with it. There are nine points, and based on the security audits conducted, we've determined that five are things that we are going to purchase or in the process of purchasing. Those are security systems that monitor the hallways exits, a campus-wide active shooter, two-way radio systems, which we've already purchased, some perimeter fencing that was required, and then bullet-resistant film, and that's where we're at right now with that project. Any questions on the safety grant? If not, Dr. Jones?
Let me introduce Dr. Jones, our Executive Director of, what's your title now?
Student Support.
There you go. Executive Director of Student Support. She's going to talk to you all about the Safe T ISD team update. She was really instrumental upfront in developing this district-wide plan that we had before Agent Millsagel came onboard, so she handles the social-emotional learning side of the, of the safety initiative that we have here, which is just as important as hardening our campuses or fortifying them in any way, shape, or form. So, Dr. Jones, with your presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford, President Washman and board. Thank you. So, in the fall, I went over a presentation of our teams and committees that we were putting together for our Safe T ISD teams, and so, as of now, we've completed that. Our campuses have designated their team members as well as our district team, but we'll also adjust that as changes come for the new year. So, in August, we will update those teams, while also review our policies and procedures and guidelines. We'll do training. We mentioned before that the Texas Safety Center requires us to go through a program to be trained, and so, I've met with a lady from the Texas Safety Center, and she gave me some names of some additional people that the state approves for us to be trained, and so, we're working on that right now. COVID has pretty much put a little hitch in that where they can't come in person, so those things are changing smoothly and quickly, so we'll be able to have those trainings in person. So, this is just a slide to remind you of what those teams look like. We have the oversight team, which is our district team, and then our campus team, which has these representatives who are specialists in these areas on those teams to help support us as we look at behaviors that may be threatening with our students, to be able to analyze those. In the fall, November 13th, we will have to submit baseline data from what we have done this year, which we've set up our teams, which is one of those, and the roles have been designated. We'll also have the number of campuses that will be functioning as a behavior threat assessment process, but also, we'll need to look at those assessments that have been, that occurred since then, but we haven't, that I'm aware, have had those assessments to the level that we needed to do a full assessment on student behavior. And then the final step, in fall of 2020, with that baseline data, we'll submit that, but we are still waiting for T E A to provide us with more information on what those procedures and guidelines will look like, and as soon as those are available, we'll update our procedures and guidelines with the requirements that may not be in there, and then we'll prepare for that comprehensive data collection. And with that data collection, they'll look at what our baseline was, and then in the fall of '21 and '22, they will compare our baseline data against our comprehensive assessment from the period of August 31st, 2020 until 2021.
So you may be wondering, those of y'all that are on the oversight team, I think the board president has membership on the oversight team. Is that correct, Agent Millsagel? And I believe, Dr. Trish Nation, you've been assigned as the other member of that oversight team. You, this board, along with the remainder of the oversight team, along with our campus teams, will go through that training here this summer? Is that what we're trying to arrange?
We're trying to get it set up. The model that we utilized is the Virginia model. When they gave us the different ones that we could go through, Dr. Jeff Millsagel and I went through some training with Sigma through the Safety Center, and it wasn't really aligned and it was behind. We were already way ahead of the game, and so, their training was behind what we've already done. So, the gentleman that does the other model, which is called the Virginia model, he's available to come. It's just right now with the COVID, he wasn't able to travel.
So what's the Virginia model?
The Virginia model is a comprehensive, it's called V-stag, but it goes through, they went through the Secret Service model. They've got a really comprehensive plan on the threat assessment models, and so, the forms that we've adapted were available through them, and so, we utilize some of their steps and forms to do the threat assessments.
So November, we got to have it trained, y'all trained by November 13th. I'm just giving you a heads up about that.
Question.
Those two. Yes. That goes along with, y'all have got cybersecurity training that's got to be done pretty quickly, as well as human trafficking and child abuse training that's got to be done before summer. That's all of you, but you two have the specialized oversight training coming up this summer as well.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Trying to learn everything. The campus team and oversight team, now, is this, each campus within the, within our district will have a team, right?
Yes, sir.
And the oversight team consists of individuals from the campus or?
They're from the district.
From the district.
So we, we meet once a month. We have a leadership team meeting that sets the agenda for this meeting, or goes over the agenda for this meeting in preparation for our officer meeting. Right after that, we have a district-wide Safe T ISD meeting of the district oversight team. These individuals right here, along with identified other individuals that are also parents in our school system and community members in our school system, will have to meet three times a year. So, it's not like y'all have to meet every month. It's once in the fall semester, once in the spring semester, and then once in the summer. For the campus-based teams, which mirror our teams as well, they're, they're, we're asking them to meet how often?
They'll, when they be.
Once a month unless they've got an actual threat assessment to, to conduct on a, on an issue at the campus. And, and the terminology on that, don't let that sway your thought about it. Threats come from a different, a lot of different places. So it could be a physical threat, it could be an online threat, it could be some, a kid that needs some assistance from the social-emotional end of things. These teams can come together to see what kind of support they can provide the, the student or the campus.
And it's, it's like a three-step model where there might be a tier-one level of threat, which, you know, may be resolved pretty easily, then you might have a second level, which is a little bit elevated that we do need to really evaluate, and then there's a third one that, that could be a more substantial threat that we would put into place. Intervention, we'd do interventions for all of them, of course, but a stronger intervention program for that student that, that's got a bigger outcry than the rest.
Yeah. Tier three may require a district-wide response on that, or the district's oversea, oversight team response on that.
And to back up a little bit, for our new board members, the '86 legislature was pretty heavy on safety and security, and there were some mandates coming out of Austin for school districts to create these types of teams and everything like this, so this was out of, in a reaction to that, we were mandated to create all of this, and so, this is an update on.
Without any guidance.
Without, yeah.
We're still waiting on that. We're still waiting on that.
We're still waiting on it.
Any other questions?
Anybody? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. And that covered the compliance and Safe T ISD update, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Moving on to big business, legal, finance, and consent agenda, I think we're going to pull item B, which is gifts and donations, as we always do, but I will take a motion to approve items A through F with the exception of B.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, and the motion carries. Now, we're going back to gifts and donations, so what do we have, Dr. Crawford?
Board, we have an outstanding donation from the Dr. Brian C. Jack Elementary PTA of $5,000, right at the, the amount that triggers board approval. Not $4,999, but right at $5,000. But it also gives us an opportunity, obviously, to state what we, state what we always say is no matter where it comes from or what the amount, we appreciate every one of our partners as they provide these funds to support enrichment at our campuses or special programs at our campuses that the normal budget may not provide. And we do provide a lot. We're very blessed here in Smith County with a substantial revenue, but certainly, we, our philanthropic initiatives and support from our parent groups is something that makes our district special, and it's my pleasure to bring this in front of y'all to consider and maybe even talk about.
And it's going towards the Leader in Me program?
It is going towards the Leader in Me program, a very effective, successful program. Sharpen the saw.
Sharpen the saw. Put first things first, I think.
Begin with the end in mind.
Well, it's a great program, and, and we're so fortunate to have that money to, to go towards it. Anybody else have anything to say? If not, I will entertain a motion to accept this donation.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the very generous donation from Jack PTA for the use as indicated.
Thank you, Reverend Hager. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries. We're also going to move along to the curriculum instruction and consent agenda, and I do not believe we're going to pull anything to talk about because I think some of the stuff is going to be covered in a later update, so I will entertain a motion to approve items A through G.
I move that we approve items A through G.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Reverend Hager. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, and the motion carries. Okay. Now, we're moving to the discussion, and this is always kind of a bittersweet one because the internal audit committee, which I served on for three years and several, several board officers has served on over the years while not being board officer in one capacity or another. Aaron is now vice president and will be rolling off the audit committee, so that means Mrs. Coker will be getting to know a new board member, and Artis Newsom has raised his hand and would love to serve on that committee, so it's our internal audit committee. We have an internal auditor that works at the pleasure of the board and oversees audits for the entire district, and you'll, you'll get to pull the hood up on that and see what all goes on, and I think we meet once a quarter, right, Mrs. Coker? Once a quarter, so. And that's just a discussion item, so congratulations, Mr. Newsom.
Is there any training that he has to go through on that since he's new?
There is an orientation.
All right. More training.
And Reverend Hager will be staying on. Okay. Now, we have a COVID-19 update.
As, has been tradition during this awkward time, I'm up here presenting to y'all instead of sitting at my chair. I'm sure if we'd have been up there without the social distancing, I'd probably just done it right there, but.
Tradition will get you beat.
Tradition will get you beat. Hashtag TWG YB. So here's our communication up, our COVID-19 update, our response. This is the third one that we've had since we started. We wrap up, it's been 12 weeks since we've seen our students and our teachers, and I tweeted out earlier this, this week that, or last week, that I'm, it's kind of odd that I'm actually looking forward to school ending, just so that we can see our kids again. It's been extremely difficult on our end as well. I know it's, we've, we've talked a lot about the, the challenges our students and our parents have had, but our teachers certainly miss our, our students, and we certainly miss our teachers, and so, maybe this is the, the beginning of the end as we start heading back toward normality. I'm not going to call it a new normal because I'm, I'm not going to accept what we've been through for the last 12 weeks as an effective way to educate our kids. We may have to do some adaptation and some hybrids in the future, but I'm really hoping that, I'll go on state, on statement, that what, the way we responded to this, and I say "we" collectively as a nation, not saying I agree with it, but we are here without educating our kids for the last 12 weeks in person, and I don't like it, and certainly, if you're an educator, you're built to be in those school buildings, teaching our kids. So, 12 weeks later, here we are. Food distribution sites remained constant the entire time, fluctuated at about 13,000 meals per week. Sometimes we're a little bit above that, sometimes we're a little bit below, but that was the average. Y'all know where the sites were located. We will execute a summer feeding program throughout June, but we won't be doing every site. We will mirror what we've kind of been doing during the summers. We tried to fill the, the gap of those solid two meals per day for our kids while school was supposed to be in session, when school was supposed to be in session. We'll transition over to our normal summer feeding program this summer. Is that right, Tasha? Okay. And we'll adjust as, as needed. A lot of that has to do with a lot of TDA, Texas Department of Agriculture, USDA guidelines, et cetera, and what they're willing to pay for during this time. Last week, we observed, celebrate Freedom Week. It's normally this week, but we wanted to go ahead and get that in place last week so that we could give this final week of our teachers, just spending some wrap-up time because it's been so awkward and, and so out of the ordinary for us to do that, that we really wanted this week to be a concentration of virtual field trips and check-ins, et cetera, with our kids to make sure that they were going to, you know, that they felt good about wrapping up this year instead of something from the curriculum end. So, a lot of social-emotional learning this week. Graduations, as y'all are aware, are scheduled for June 3 through 6, 8:00 PM at Rose Stadium. That's all four of our graduations, early college, high school, Ryse Academy, John Tyler High School, Robert Lee High School. We're excited about that. We were pretty adamant we were going to do it somehow, and I guess that, that worked out. Appropriate spacing and seating will be marked with, with the grass berm allowed as well. So if you're watching this on TV right now and you have a little bit of concern but you still want to attend, bring a blanket, go old-school, sit on the grass berm. I remember those days whenever they used to pop fireworks out there, July 4th, that the grass berm was always open for seating, so we are going to allow that for graduation. We will have appropriate distancing between folks that are seated. We'll actually skip a row between every section of seating. Let me emphasize this, though, to the board and to those that are watching this on television, that these ceremonies are not a requirement and that attendance is at the guest and the graduates' own free will, okay? We are not mandating that anyone attends graduation. Safety and physical well-being is our priority, and if you have concerns about that, you're not being forced to go, and we will have protocols and logistics in place to be able to safely get people into the stadium and safely exit the stadium. We do ask that anybody that's in attendance there stay for the entire graduation and not just leave when your graduate's name is called. We are actually going to be very prescriptive about how we release the stadium, et cetera. You must have a ticket to get in, and you must come with your graduate. So if Jackson Crawford has five tickets to hand out, he needs to come with his five guests. We're doing that because we don't need to end up with a graduate having 10 to 15 people there that may not be associated with the graduate. We really want to keep this an intimate ceremony with those that are close to the graduate and families as well, so please, please respect that in this unique opportunity. We should be blessed that we're having this opportunity, and I'm hoping that no one will abuse this opportunity. You took action here on a learning management system here just about five minutes ago that will move us closer to an effective instructional technology model, whether we're in person or through a distance learning model, or perhaps even a hybrid model. In June, you will have opportunity to consider one-to-one student and teacher devices. Additionally, the expansion of our district Wi-Fi capabilities, our district Wi-Fi access points, both on and off district property is something that we're very excited about having. This is not going to be the name for it, but envision a park-and-learn type of opportunity for, for those that might have low connectivity or no connectivity at all. We're just going to ask you once a week to hit that Wi-Fi so that we can communicate with you and, and the, y'all can communicate with, with the, with the district as far as instructional materials goes. Now, that's for if we're in, if we're stuck in a situation like we're in right now, and we're hoping that that's not what's going to happen, but we need to be prepared if something crazy does get thrown at us. We're also seeking partnerships with churches and businesses to work with us that's kind of on the perimeter of our district. We think we have everything covered pretty much if you're in proximity to the loop, but we are thinking about other locations that are kind of in the frontier areas of our school system to where there may not be a lot of connectivity for our, for our campuses, like in the rural areas especially. We realize there are also some, some zones inside of the district as well, but we think that putting those, those antenna on top of our school systems, being able to broaden some of that connectivity to Wi-Fi will help as well. We're doing that in lieu of these, these buses. Y'all have seen some districts actually do some of the mobile Wi-Fi, well, you got to pay a driver to go park the bus, and then that's your district property that's right there. We would like to partner with churches or businesses to potentially. We would like to partner with churches or businesses to potentially look at placing some of our antenna up there as well. By July, you'll have a glance at instructional requirements of our faculty and our staff with full obligations for seat time for students, direct instructional delivery, and participation for students, and yes, even feedback and grading standards. We realize that this has been a very unique time for us, and the things that we had to do, dang, Loper, did you put that on 80? Tasha? Goodness gracious. I know I'm up here talking, but I'm not nervous in front of y'all. I mean, I've worked here for six years. Can't just be me. Okay, thank you. I'm kinda getting my blood up anyway. So, we realize that this time period has been very awkward for parents, and we realize that we're gonna forgive ourselves for having to learn how to build this plane while it's in the air, but when we come back, we'll have a very, a much more prescriptive plan about what that looks like. The LMS, the Learning Management System that you approved five minutes ago, is Canvas. Our high school students that are involved with TJC and UT Tyler are very familiar with Canvas. Canvas is a nationally renowned, world-renowned learning management system that a lot of colleges and universities use. They also have a quality product that is also K through 8. It's very similar as far as the platforms go. We realize that technology might be the next, instructional technology is the next step for our school system as we've, you know, somewhat stabilized some of the meat and potatoes, Xs and Os of instruction and accountability, and being able to actually introduce this inside of our classrooms with a whole lot more frequency is something that's gonna benefit all of our students. Paired with the one-to-one devices, we think that the learning management system that we put in front of y'all tonight is that system. We looked at three other systems, actually four other systems, EdBricks, Blackboard, Schoology, not Schoology, is what I kept calling it, Schoology, and Canvas. And while all of them are very proficient in what they do, whenever we put our teachers on it, we put parents on it, we put students on it, they found that the Canvas would fed their need, or fed their needs more than, and met their needs more than maybe our end. We went into that, told Ms. Hiddle, along with her folks, Dr. Hanson, the SIOs, the Executive Directors of School Improvement, excuse me, that we wanted the end user in mind, because that's the thing that we really were concerned about as we started going through some of this. We may all fell in love with a certain product or system on our end, the instructional end, but when you start talking about distance learning and the parents being able to assist their child in some form or fashion while at home, Canvas won the day, and it's our pleasure to actually do that. Now, when we're not stuck in these distance learning phenomenon that we're in right now, absolutely, these, Canvas is going to be used in a more routine fashion in our daily lives on our campuses. So when we get back in our brick-and-mortar buildings, technology is gonna be very prevalent within our buildings. Each kid will have a one-to-one device, the teachers will have an updated device as well as appropriate based upon their content area, and we should be a whole lot more proficient in being able to execute any type of situation we have now, or satisfy the learner needs that we have. If you think about it, our children are native adopters of technology, and while we don't want technology to replace the teacher, I think we've all figured out that we need our teachers. We do think that we can provide that resource and upgrade our instructional system. Hold your questions for me here at the, in the end as I get past the LMS. I wouldn't spend a lot of time on that. Next bullet, anticipation of the economic contraction and the impact on our financial forecast. The district has reorganized its personnel. It's complete. Surprisingly, I believe we got better in many ways. There are some ways that certainly we're gonna have to be a little bit leaner than what we have been, but those remaining in administrative leadership positions are gonna have to make adjustments and gonna take on a few more responsibilities. We were pretty conservative. We reported that every year in the amount of administrators that we were employing. I'm anxious to see what we are compared to our peers even now. So during the first rating, we always prided ourselves in saying that we were a couple of standard deviations away from average based on our, in comparison to our peers, and now I'm just, I'm wondering what that's going to look like. I can't imagine that it won't benefit us even more. I do appreciate those that handled their assignments professionally up until this point, and, you know, we have some intelligent people that underwent, or that understand how blessed we are all in education to have a job right now, and that was expressed many times over inside of our conversations with Human Resources, along with other departments that had to deliver these assignments. We're working with some of those staff that might have a gap in the, in receiving a check. In other words, if they were on a 12-month contract, maybe they're now down to 11, or maybe 11 down to 10. And so we've got some summer projects to where we're gonna be able to fill some of those gaps as far as a check goes. So this is gonna be a very soft landing of a reorg because we're doing this ahead of time. Certainly, we're waiting for what the 87th legislature is going to show us when they, a year from now when they go meet. We should be developing our new biennial budget this time next year, Tasha, and so that's gonna be a very interesting project. Lastly, logistics for school in the fall. Calendar discussions and, yes, UL activities remain priority topics across the state, whether it be the school districts, TEA, or the governor's office. Y'all saw a little glimpse of some of their work and their thought about what they're wanting to do in regard to what they're allowing for in summer and summer camps. A little sidebar conversation I had right before the meeting started was the difference between summer school and summer camps, and some of the different logistical constraints that we're putting on summer school versus summer camps. So we'll be working with, through that as well. We've asked for guidelines on what constraints could be for the fall, and we do have some options on our desktop that we're working on and that we're thinking about, but they're pretty shallow right now because everything's so ambiguous. In other words, if we've got plans A through M out there, how much work can you dedicate on Plan G if you don't know that that's the one that you're gonna wind up, you know, having to work on? So, I think you see some of the things that are coming out from TEA about some of the ideas that are starting to generate out there, mainly as far as calendar goes, but I think it's much more, it's much deeper than just calendar. It's about how are you going to execute school on a daily basis if there still is COVID floating around? We know it's gonna be, just like there is other viruses. But the main thing we're gonna start off with is taking care of the elderly and making sure that we're taking care of staff and students that are deemed medically fragile. And we're not ready to report on that yet, but at the same time, that's where we're gonna start out with. Certainly, safety is a priority, but if you look at the data, the ones that are really being impacted on this or in those groups and whatever our plan evolves as, that'll be a priority in helping those folks. So, that's the end of my COVID-19 response update for May 18th. What questions do you have?
On the anticipated cuts that you referred to, what is your gut telling you, your estimation telling you that we're getting prepared to see for next year when the legislature sets the budget? And what kind of damage, in your opinion, do you think school districts across the state and Tyler ISD specifically will be looking at?
I've talked to other school systems in Smith County. We're all around the 4% to 5% for next year already. Whether or not they're gonna wind up being that as we go along in the future is to be determined. I think in 2011, Tasha, refresh my memory, what did the state ask back from us?
About $10 million.
It was about $9 million. And so right now, we're upwards of, you wanna say it? Well, yeah, where are we at right now?
Four and a half.
We're at four and a half right now.
In position.
In position. And so we've been able to effectively look at some of our, you know, the valuations and the revenue that could potentially come in as well. So, we're gonna be pretty close to being able to reach that when the time comes. You know, are we gonna go do all of it this year? No. But certainly, we would be able to handle what we can handle right now just within our staffing program. That way, when there are more difficult discussions down the road or options, then y'all will know we've done our work on the front end of this as far as leaning up and anything that looks administrative. So, yeah, if it was $9 million last time, which was a, that's less than, a lot less than 10%, I'd say anywhere from 7% to 9% is probably something that you can probably count on and be conservative and not let it surprise you.
Okay. Well, I think it's good for the, just the public to hear that, you know, we're anticipating a smaller budget and that this COVID thing has impacted our district exactly how we experienced it, but it will also impact us financially, you know, moving out a couple of years, and I think it's good for people just to know that we will have to make adjustments, and we're trying to head that off the pass as best as we can.
Yeah, just like in the recession, you know, the economy started recovering, and then the school system, then you kinda had to start paying it back then because your budget's based upon the economy before you go to the biennial. And so in saying that, we realize what the numbers look like right now for oil and gas, and then we also look, we also know what sales tax looks like right now. You know, property values are something, that's something that the state's gonna have to talk about here as well. So I think that when you start putting all that gumbo together, you're gonna, you're gonna wind up doing it. It just happens a little bit further back than what you may be experiencing right now. And we'll effectively manage it. We did it last time, and we've already started now because of that forecast. And so, yes, Sir Mr. Washman, I do think that this economy will have impact on the state legislature. It's really gonna depend upon how quickly the economy recovers as well. I was on a Zoom call last week with Lindell's own state-renowned, national-renowned, international-renowned economist, Dr. Ray Perryman. And Dr. Perryman thinks a year from now that we're gonna be rocking as far as the economy goes. Well, the time period from now until the legislature meets is gonna have to be a lot of buildup as far as the economy goes, and of course, we're gonna have to get over this virus, whichever way we choose to do it, whether it's through a vaccine or herd immunity, whatever happens, for people to get this thing cranked back up again. So, he's got confidence. He's been very credible over the last 30-plus years, and I really feel like that that's gonna happen, which may mean that it doesn't sting quite as bad as far as the school system goes. I'm not saying that individual, you know, individual livelihoods may not be affected a little bit longer, but as far as the school system goes, we're hoping that that 11-month recovery happens because the recession, if you remember, it took 58 months to recover from the Great Recession. So I'm hoping that this short spike will be something that benefits us as we have to go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Just a comment.
There you go.
Comment in regards to the individual contracts from maybe 12 down to 10 or 11. I really appreciate you giving them the opportunity to make up the difference in salaries for those months that they may lose.
Sure.
It's their option as to whether they choose to do the special projects or not, but you are giving them an opportunity to make up the difference with that.
Yes, sir.
Because that could be a difficult time for them.
Absolutely. We're very sensitive to that, and it's not abnormal. That does happen from time to time again. You know, we're, none of us are guaranteed a spot, but when there's adjustments that are made, we'll try to softly land that individual back into a more comfortable position because missing a check is certainly something that somebody cannot plan for.
Right.
A reduced amount in that check, but still getting it every month is something that we think we can kinda cushion that blow a little bit. Now, I believe that some of the work's being done in curriculum instruction, and they're to contact you, correct? Okay. Now, we're probably gonna cut that off here pretty soon. We need to know if they want that work and what, is that right?
Yes, sir. If we first start the work.
Okay. So, we need to know pretty soon so we can get them on the roster to get that additional check.
Dr. Crawford, just wanna applaud you being proactive in tightening the belt for Tyler ISD. I know changes like this are not pleasant for anybody to go through, for the leader, for those who are having to endure more work spread between fewer hands, but there's a lot of belt tightening that's happening all over our community and all over our country. I just applaud you for being on the front end of that and not a victim of it at the back end when you don't have time to react and plan.
Yeah, thank you. We've got great people that work for us, and we have godly people that work for us that understand, and I've been through a few of these. In fact, I was, I put some pencil to the paper, and there's been no more than, it happens once every five years, so I've been in administration for 15-plus, over 15, 18 years now, I guess, and I've gone through three of these. And it's just the nature of the Texas economy and how it's tied to oil and gas and sales tax as well. And you know what? That's just something we're gonna have to live with and plan for, and it teaches us to be very efficient when times are good so that we can prepare for something like this, but it also helps us just by hiring good people that can understand, that are smart people, that can understand what we're having to do. So, yeah, it has not been comfortable for any of us. It's been a big project, and I think that does kinda increase your energy level to get this done. No one's locked up. We hadn't had, we hadn't had analysis by paralysis by analysis like I've been throwing around lately, but thank you for saying that towards me, Reverend Hager, because you're really complimenting our staff that has done this, and even the ones that have accepted other responsibilities into the district, how good of people they are as well.
Anybody else have any other comments or questions for Dr. Crawford on his COVID-19 update?
More COVID stuff?
Okay, thank you for the presentation. All right, well, we are already at that time of future business in our agenda and almost already at that time for graduations, and we do have a good bit of those in future business. RISE Academy is on June 3rd, the Board Workshop is June 4th, and then later that day, we have early college high school graduation, June 4th. June 5th, we have John Tyler, and June 6th, we have Robert Lee High School graduation. And then June 22nd, we'll have our regular meeting, so it'll be different, but I'm really happy that we get to see, even if some of them are 70 yards away, that we get to see the students graduating.
They will be 70 yards away. Isn't that right? Okay, yeah.
Yep. So, other than that, I guess I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, the motion carries, and this meeting is adjourned.